The, just for everybody's information, we are going to televise this. So, the cameras will be rolling, starting right now. This is a little bit unique for us, so I don't have a format that we normally go by. So, I'm gonna shoot from the hip a little bit on rules and regulations. But, what I think I want to start out doing is do a monologue of my own for just a minute and get some of the facts as I know them out there. And then I'd like to hear from the city council. And then we would like to open up the microphone to get everybody else's opinion that's here. I'd like for you to be respectful of time. You know, we have to start the regular city council meeting at 6:00. So, try to keep your comments to, you know, two or three minutes. If you agree with the person in front of you, then come up and say ditto and we get the message. Because it's literally, of all the things that we put on social media and look for feedback, if I've ever seen anything that was divided equally, the comments that we're getting back are pretty much exactly split. So, it's a hard decision for us to make. So, if, let me, let me talk for just a little bit, not to monologue but too long. But, the, you know, to kind of set the parameters, right now, where are we right now? Right now, we're paying $2.99 fee. The bad thing about that is, is that for regular use, which is being picked up twice a month, only 40% of our citizens are using the service. And of those 40%, a third of them are giving a contaminated product to our recycler. So, all that's going to the landfill. We, we all know and we feel the pain of all recyclers right now because the recycling economy is in the tank. China is not taking stuff like they used to. I believe, I'm gonna quote Waste Management, George Whitley, but I'm fairly certain that he told me that Waste Management nationally, across the country, has sent zero recycling products to China in 2018, which probably they were their, it was their biggest market. So, we understand the problem, that there's no market out there for this recycling product. And we understand that they're in the business to make money. So, this is not a throw Waste Management under the, under the bus by any means. It's basically us trying to make a decision, is the amount of money that we're gonna have to start paying in April worth what we're getting? And, so that's kind of where we are. The, we've gotten several emails, but only six, believe it or not. And, all six of those were advocates for recycling. Let me say another thing, is that, that, you know, I do not have any intention of quitting recycling altogether. We're gonna continue to try to recycle as best we possibly can. It's the program that we're running right now is not working. And, so, there are other options and we're gonna certainly look into them. Nathan, our communications director, looked at the social media comments and literally has divided them into a third. We had a third that says, "We gotta keep it." A third of the comments says, "We need to scrap it." And a third of the comments says that we probably need to look at a different program. So, I agree with, with most all of them. We know, we gotta do something. You know, what we're doing now is not working, so we've gotta change it, quit it, fix it, or whatever. So, another thing that we know for sure, is that in negotiations for Waste Management to extend our contract in April, they wanted us, the city of North Little Rock, to pay $124,428, which is an additional dollar per household from October through April. That is not in our contract, that's outside the contract. And if we did that, then they would extend our contract in April for two more years. And in 2019, it would be $4.14 a household. And, starting in 2020, it would be $4.29 per household. So, basically, four, $4.15. I've thrown that number around several times. So, we know all those to be a fact. Little Rock is involved in this and so is Sherwood. So, that total amount of money, if ours is 120, Little Rock's is gonna be 360. And Sherwood's somewhere short of ours, of course. So, it's a, it's around 500 and something thousand dollars that they want the three of us to pay in order to renew this contract in April. So, when those numbers got to, to that level, I decided to get out of the negotiation and bring it to the city council and to our citizens both. It's a tremendous amount of money. So, on further, we have several options to explore. One is a subscribed recycling program, where if you wanna recycle, you subscribe and they'll come pick your recycling up once a week, once every two weeks. They're doing this, we've done a lot of research in the last month. They're doing this in Indianapolis, 'cause they have the same problems we have, contamination, prices of recycled goods have gone into the tank. And, they've got about, and all of my numbers are gonna be close, but they've got about 900,000 people in Indianapolis. So, that's not how many households they have. But, of those 900,000, they have 30,000 households that are in the subscribed program. So, that's not a real huge, I think probably you're gonna figure, maybe divide 900,000 by four, and that's how many households they have. So, probably 10%, I'm gonna guess is a ballpark figure. At 10% of the people in Indianapolis, I've done the subscribed program. But, that subscription's gonna be pretty pricey. You know, I'm gonna guess anywhere from eight to $16 a month. One thing that we're strongly looking at, and we used to do this unsupervised, but a lot of cities are going to this. St. Louis is, the cities around St. Louis and all the suburbs around there are going through this and dropping out and looking at doing supervised recycling drop-off centers, which would be, you would actually go and, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, Mondays and Wednesdays, whatever, and we would have people there. And you would drop off your recycled goods at these locations. And therefore, we would have zero contamination, because we would touch every bit. And there's all sorts of innovative things. One, one program we saw, that they will actually give you a 65-gallon bag, canvas bag, for what your recycles in. And then you do a drive-through and you pull up there and, and one of our guys would grab the bag and give you a new bag. And you'd take it home. And then two weeks later, you could come back through and, and we'd rotate those bags. So, those are, there's a lot of different options. Fayetteville, I missed, visited with their mayor. They do the program like we used to. If y'all remember the little green buckets. And they have two different color buckets. Ones for paper and plastic and ones for aluminum or whatever. And so therefore, they pick them up at the curb, they touch them before it goes in the truck, so they have no contamination. So, that's another option that we're certainly gonna look at. I believe we're gonna go up and visit with the Fayetteville people into this month and see how that program works and how they, how they charge it and how they handle it. It's all internal, too. They, they do it themselves. They charge for it. But, the sanitation department in Fayetteville does that. And then the possibility of contracting with another company, that's possible, very hard to do at this point in time. There's no other MRF, that's where they, where they split up all the product. They're very expensive. And, there's no other company in central Arkansas that has a MRF, other than Waste Management. So, could it be done? Possibly. But, I would think that it would be a lot more than $2.99 a month. So, things that, that we've gotta work on, you know, another thing is the logistics. There is, we've been told now that there is a little bit of a market for glass, but Waste Management wants to take glass out of the contract. So, we will not recycle glass. Plastic bags will contaminate also. So, removal of glass and, and plastic bags will, will start in April also. The, part of our contract with Waste Management was education part, where we try to educate the people. And back in the very beginning, you know, we were doing education for participation. And, then, we've, we've done none, if any, education on contamination. So, the, the programs that we've been working for the last seven years is very often hasn't worked. We're either not doing it right, we're not doing enough of it. And it, and it takes a lot of hard work. You know, Waste Management's idea is, they pick it up with a side loader truck, the driver never gets out, never looks inside of the bucket. And so, they only know if it's contaminated by a camera that looks at it when you dump it into the back. The program, we thought, was gonna entertain tagging recycled bins and two strikes and you're out. And we'll pick up a bin and you can't recycle anymore. But, the logistics and the cost of doing that, I think that Waste Management probably figured it was just as easy to throw the garbage away, rather than train the citizens to do that. You know, and if we had, if we had a role to play in that, I certainly would accept that responsibility. But, I believe that the contract reads that they were gonna do that for us. The, and then also, as I said, the contamination rate is, we have some neighborhoods that are 94% contaminated. So, that means nine and a half of every bin in that neighborhood is contaminated. So, those are pretty ugly numbers. Let me throw some other numbers at you really quickly and then I'll shut up and let everybody else visit. But, Waste Management's numbers show that we have 20,738 households, okay? And these numbers are ballpark, and they admit that they're ballpark, but it's, it's by their experience, that only 40% of that 20,000 regularly uses the, the program. So, that's 8,295 bins that they're picking up on a regular basis, of our 20,000. 33% of those are contaminated. So, we only have 5,474 clean recycled bins that get recycled. Everything else goes into the landfill. You know, I think our number one goal, when we started recycling, was to, was the environment, of course. You know, make things better for our kids and our grandkids. And to, to extend the longevity of the landfill as long as we possibly could, so we didn't have to go find another one. And, we haven't met those goals, at all. You know, next year, $4.14 per household, and we have 20,700 households, that's $85,855 a month in 12 months. That's a million dollars. One million dollars is that our citizens have paid to pick up 5,474 bins that are, that are recyclable. So, if you did the math on that, 5,474 into a million, that's $188 a year. So, that's $15.68 per cart that they're picking up that's recyclable. And they still can't make any money at that. So, this shows you, it's a combination of everything. This is a, a problem throughout the entire country. And so, we're not by ourselves and we're, everybody's trying to scramble to see what in the world we can do and how we can do it better. I've even heard, you know, some people say, "Well, let's just quit for a couple of years, until the economy comes back on recycling." I don't wanna quit for a couple of years, but, but, it's a big but. So, with that, I'm gonna stand down a little bit and, and open the floor to the city council and then we'll listen to what some of the people in the audience have to say. Comments? Ms. Ross?
I do have one here, and I promised Ken Johnson, since he couldn't be here tonight. He lives on Hazelwood. And he's against the renewal of the city's contract with Waste Management. He's also against the request for a rate increase. He said that they leave the receptacles in the middle of the street, they leave the receptacles open on rainy days, which allows them to fill up. They make no allowances for the elderly or infirm. His suggestions are, if the city decides to renew its contract with Waste Management, make the service optional for those who cannot afford the service. And since the city of North Rock Sanitation Department does such an excellent job, he feels the city should provide their own recycling service and hire the workers to perform the service. And he did go on to tell me by phone that he thinks that we should double their salary. So, that was Ken Johnson's. Now, I have some more-
Thank you, Ken.
I have some comments of mine, if you wanna-
Absolutely, go ahead.
Just take us on down. And, and I know I've talked to you about this, Mayor, is, from the beginning, Waste Management has not lived up to their contract. They were supposed to give us weekly, monthly reports, and I know Harold Ford, I think I wore Harold out there trying to get reports from, from the beginning. And it would've given us the areas that were getting the contamination rates, that we could have dealt with them from the beginning. I think Harold and I, two years probably, that we fought back and forth trying to get those reports from Waste Management. And we never could get the reports. So, they failed on that end. They did not do that, live up to their contract on that end. The glass, absolutely. I, I know that several of us up here are huge recyclers and anything that we can do to keep the glass out of the landfills, too, we need to look at that. I've had several people tell me, the drop-off service, that they would be willing to take their items to a drop-off service, if we were, you know, if we don't renew the contract with Waste Management. And, there's just been a lot of things that have come over, over this, the complaints that we've had on Waste Management. Our sanitation department spends probably as much time on the recycle problems as they deal on the sanitation problems for the city. I've called their code officers so many times, the, the bins will sit out there for three months. Waste Management, you can see that it's contaminated, but they will not get out, they will not tag the van, the bin. And then eventually, our sanitation department has to go out there and just pick up the bin, literally pick it up. So, they haven't done anything as far as educational there.
Others? Mr. Whitaker?
In days of old, when we started- When we started trying to, to recycle, we used the drop-off containers. One of the primary issues we had at that time was, you know, some businesses would let us set those things up, but then there was always trash around the recycle operations. And eventually, the businesses that were good to us at the beginning said, you know, "Can you move it someplace else?" And that's sort of a problem. And, you know, I think we probably all want to participate, well, okay, let me rephrase it. I think our hearts are in the right place. But, you know, people don't always do what they're supposed to do. And, so, from, from my perspective, you know, loading those things out, out on our business community again, is probably not one of the high items on, on my list.
I agree. That was, that was my first thought also, that I wouldn't do that to the, our friends at Kroger, you know, right there on McKean and North Hills, 'cause it was, it was awful. As a reason, I, you know, we'll probably have to hand-select these locations. I will want them to be fenced. I will want them to be manned, so that somebody pulls up there and they, they can't contaminate everything else, you know? So, probably two days a week and, you know, all day long. You know, from 7:00 in the morning to, to 6:00 at night, or whatever it might be, to catch people going to work and coming home from work, so they can drop them off. So, I'm, I'm not gonna inconvenience any of our, any of our retailers or business owners. We'll go find some spots if we have to.
Okay. All right. Second question, you had mentioned $124,000. Was that coming directly from North Little Rock, or was it from the, the-
We talked about that. We, our regional solid waste district and Craig Douglas, our director, is here. We have a reserve in there. And when we originally started talking about this, we had agreed that we would take October through March money from our recycling district's budget. Y'all know who I am, how I am on, on reserves. And I don't like to touch them unless we have to. And, so, no, we would not write a check for $124,000. The district would write it for us, along with Little Rock's and along with Sherwood's. And then we've gotta make Maumell and, and the county, and Jacksonville and Wrightsville equal. So, that's about 700,000 that we're gonna have to hit, and we've only got 1.1 in, in that budget. So, man, I mean, I'm just, I'm having a hard time with that. I like having more than that in there. So, even, another reason that I wanted to jump out, because I just don't think that's fair. You know, we got, we got a, we got a deal, and our deal runs into the end of March, and they just, I feel their pain, but still, you know, if, if all of a sudden recycle quadrupled, they're not gonna write us a check back, 'cause they're making more money. You know, but when they start losing money, then they want us to write a check and, and not look at the contract. So, I just don't think it's fair. And, you know, $4.15 knocks the heck out of a $5 bill. And, when only 60% of our people aren't using this thing on a regular basis, that's $5, I just didn't give back to them. Ms. Robinson?
Well, I know that in War II, there will be some that would oppose the $4 fee, whereas others would be okay with it. But, the subscription-based service, that would be where Waste Management or whomever would, would directly bill the, the resident, as opposed to the money being taken out or onto their bill, so they would directly bill for it, which sounds good to me. But, now, you mentioned St. Louis supervised, have supervised drop-off centers. And so, you mentioned maybe two days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which means we would have a staff person doing that. I don't know if they would be part-time, you know, or full-time. But, have we looked at, you know, even if we decided to go with the drop-off centers, have we looked at the cost?
No.
Okay.
The, the one cost that we looked at is what our tipping fee is going to go up. So, we took the amount of money, our amount of tonnage that we're gonna be additional pickup, and it wasn't, it wasn't a deal killer. It was like $43,000, Harold. Yeah, our tipping fees are gonna go up $43,000 in a year.
So, that's per year?
Yeah.
Increase?
Increase, yeah.
I know, the other day, you and I talked, you said you thought it might be $100,000.
Well, I was shooting from a hip.
Okay.
And Harold, Harold did the math on it.
You didn't interrupt him.
So, $43,000 and, you know, give or take, maybe it's $63,000. We, we don't know, but it's, it's not something that's gonna kill the deal, as far as us having to go ahead and pick up that additional garbage.
Well, you know, when we started the recycling, if I remember correctly, we had said that this would be ideal, because it would be less waste going into the landfill. So, if we take a step back and let's say, we decide we aren't gonna recycle at all, then, you know, which goes back to what you say, then everybody is just gonna put what's recyclable into the garbage, and we will be paying more, as you stated, you know, in the landfill. So, this is something that, you know, we're gonna have to really weigh.
Yeah, there, you know, I mean, there's options, you know, let's take the, the cost of the collection centers. You know, the, the city could, you know, they're charging $2.99 now. We could charge every city, I mean, every household, a dollar.
How much?
A dollar, or 50 cents. You know, I mean, or we can cover it ourselves. That just depends on what you guys wanna do. You know, I mean, we can, so, I mean, this is so new that I don't have an answer. And I don't, I don't have the dollar figures. You know, Ken, you know, those, at one time, when the district couldn't fund those drop-off centers, we were gonna look into, to doing it. And it seemed like, you know, those, those tipping fees and everything for those big containers was $7,000? I can't remember now what, what it was. But, we can do that and, and, you know, we could pull two employees, you know, off of their regular job two days a week, or something like that, to, to handle these things. So, we just don't know those numbers yet. Ms. White, you wanna say something?
Well, I had a couple of questions that my, you know, residents have brought to me. One of them was, if we would stop the Waste Management program and return the bins, how would that work? And then it came, a thought came to my mind, what if people didn't cooperate to return the bins? Could we be held responsible for any cost for those bins? Those, that was something that concerned me.
And, and I don't have an answer to that. I've, I've heard that, that if this ended, Waste Management would, would come and get all their, their bins. I've heard that Waste Management would abandon them, so I don't know which one's correct. When, when we stopped negotiating, when I stopped negotiating, I haven't had any conversation with them since then, so. Ms. Ross?
Do we have companies currently within the central Arkansas area that would, that could do the optional pickup for the ones that want to recycle?
We don't know.
We don't know?
We don't know.
Okay. I know there's a lot of people here in the audience, and I see some from different, you know, companies, so I didn't know if maybe they'd have a chance just to say, or, I'm just curious.
We, we literally, I mean, there's a, a glass recycler here, too, that, that is gonna come in and, and make a presentation to us, so that we can look at it and digest it before we bring it to you. So, I-
That's a question I have.
I think everybody's kinda waiting to see the feel of the council. And, that's what I'm doing, too, is I'm trying to get a feel from you guys and from our citizens. Because we're gonna have to make a decision at the next council meeting on what we're gonna do, if we're gonna extend that contract for two more years, starting in April. Because we gotta start making those payments in, in October. So, I'm gonna introduce legislation at the next council meeting. I don't know how I'll draw it up. I'll draw it up either for it or against it. And then we'll vote on which way we wanna go and make that decision. So, once that decision's made, I think our, our friends out there that are, are in the sanitation business will bring us options that we can look at. Ms. Robinson?
Well, Mayor, you know, in my mind, when I think about costs, staff, and all of that, I would much rather there be a subscription. And that way, we don't have to worry about where they're gonna take the stuff. You know, there's a, a subscription, if it's $5 or whatever, then they could bill Waste Management, you know, directly, and we're out of it.
That's a great idea. I think that all of them are gonna tell me that you gotta have the volume. You know, so if, if we've got 1,000 houses out there, probably wouldn't work. If we had 4,000, it might. So, and I don't know, if we enter into a contract like that, we might have to guarantee 4,000. I just don't, I don't know. I mean, I really would like to be able to answer your question, but I don't know.
Why would there need to be a contract? I mean, between us and them, if, you know, if there's a, if there's a subscription and folks are pinned directly to them, then there would be no need for a contract between us and them.
Yeah, but I think, I'm- Ms. White?
I'm kinda like you, Mayor, that if, if there goes a subscription with a company, they're gonna have a minimum, you know, for them, that we have to negotiate with them and so forth. Let me think, let me give you my thoughts, Mayor, all right? I, I looked at these alternatives down here at the Waste Management, and the last one down there is to contract with another company. If we did that, how are we gonna increase the 40% participation rate? And how are we gonna decrease the 33% contamination rate if we go with another company? I, I think, you know, and you had some valid points about Waste Management, hadn't done this, hadn't done that. But, it hadn't all been Waste Management's fault. We've got some residents in the city that just don't have the want-to's.
They don't want-
You know? And, 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 and we haven't, we either haven't educated them, or we, we failed in our, in our trying. So, I'm thinking that it- So I'm thinking that if we were to go the route, contracting with another company, we're going to have to do something about that, that participation rate and that contamination rate, you know, and that's...
It's so expensive to do that, and so Waste Management chose not to do it. Because instead of having, you know, they're trying to pick up X number of homes in, every day, you know, and with one driver. So, if, if they did it the way probably would be great to do, that it put two people, one walking, one checking, one tagging, so there's no way that they're going to be able to get 2,000 homes or 5,000 homes in a day with, per truck by doing that, so...
I know, people in my ward, for the, you know, and I've talked to several people in the last several days, you know, they like it, you know? My neighbors like it.
I like it, too.
You know, in the last seven years, Waste Management has missed my recycle bin once. That was about, what was it, Harold? Where's Harold? About a month ago, wasn't it? You know? But I don't remember them putting my bin out in the middle of the street. Sure, they leave the lid off, but I've drilled holes in the bottom of my recycle bin so the water can drain out if it's raining, and some things like that. But the people in my area like it, and I, and I'm not saying that's a good thing or a bad thing, because some people in other areas don't like it. I think recycling as a whole has been good for the city for the last seven years. This is a tough decision we've got to make.
I agree.
There's, and there's a lot of, a lot of alternatives, a lot, you know, this supervised recycling drop-off centers. Who's going to man those at midnight?
They're closed.
Yeah, well, we hope, we hope to fence them and gate them off. Now, is that going to keep somebody from laying a mattress on the outside of the gate? Probably not.
You know, it's, it's going to happen, you know? It's going to happen. But I like, you know, I like, I like the service now, and I, you know, I'm willing to pay a little bit more. I'm pleased with the service that I've received, but I'm just, I'm just one vote. I'm just one vote, and I'm just, there's, we have a lot to consider, a lot to consider. But that, that contamination rate, if we took it over ourselves as a city, then we're going to ask our, our employees to do what Waste Management has been doing for $3 a month. And I think that we ought to, you know, come up with a, if it's a dollar, $2, or even $3, that if we, if we take it over ourselves, we need to compensate our employees to do that, so...
But we can't take it over ourselves.
Well, I understand that, yeah.
We don't have the trucks, we don't have the ma, we don't have the Murph.
But just everything would go to the landfill.
Yeah.
And so you're asking, how many tons do we pick up a month, reci, how many, how many tons recycled is there per month that goes to the recycle center? That's going to be going to the landfill.
Right.
Right.
That's that $43,000 additional tipping fee, probably. It's, I don't have that number in front of me, but it's not near as big as you think it is.
And I don't have an answer. I don't have an answer. I'm just, I can just say that every time I talk to somebody, it's, one of these responses on here is what they've come up with.
I agree. Ms. Ross?
If we'd had the reports that they should have been doing, doing all along, we would know that amount. But I think the problem is, is the different areas have different desires. Some areas want to, are heavily recyclers, like in your area, and there's other areas that, that don't want to recycle. So that's, that's our dilemma, and we've only got 25 minutes left, and I want to hear from the people in the audience.
Okay, we've got 25 minutes left, so certainly, let's just take, everybody take their turn, and, and I'm not going to put a clock on you, but if I raise my hand, I've heard all, all we need to hear.
My name is James Ard.
I've heard all I need to hear, Jimmy. Next. I'm teasing, go ahead.
I am for recycling, but some of the stuff that happens in some areas, I'm not, especially mine. Let's give them a warm fuzzy to start off with. I'm handicapped, and I cannot get my recycle bins to the street. Harold gave me the number of a lady that does as good as Wayne Rappman that was with them. That cunt was doing a good keeping up with stuff, so they got rid of him. That's my personal opinion. But they do leave the things out in the street, cars hit them, they, they don't come and, come back and pick them up when you call them. I mean, why, Harold has to do a lot of their work, and I will admit, I got a strike one the other day because the people getting my recycled stuff out didn't realize they wasn't supposed to put the garbage in. So I got struck one. I did not go out and check it because it's so hard to get out sometimes. But I'm for it. I think maybe we ought to consider going with someone else. There is a gentleman here, Mr. Rappman, that used to work with Waste Management, and I think he could do us a good job if you'll meet with him. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think that, I'm going to try to be as clear as possible, but it's hard to be clear with this, this, because there are no easier... My name is Jeremy Rhodes. I'm an Indian Hills resident. As Alderman Witcher said, I think a lot of us like to recycle, but not all of us know, even me, you'll probably not find a better advocate for recycling in this room. Even till a year ago, I was just, oh, does it recycle? I don't know, I'll just throw it in there anyways. It's only been until this year that I've, you know, tried to amend my ways. I, I got to believe that a lot of people feel that way. From the research that I've read, single stream seems to make that more of a thing. Waste Management is going to continue to do single stream. So, it just becomes a luxury for people to use the recycling bin. I don't, I, I would love to keep us recycling, but I don't, it seems like a pipe dream sometimes. I don't know if there, these are the only alternatives we could have. For me, the drop-off center seems like the best idea, but I'm just not 100% sure on that. As someone concerned about what we're doing to the environment, at this point, I'd rather just say, let's scrap recycling for the citywide program, and then ban plastic bottles and, and bags. But I, like I said, that's a pipe dream. I'd love to keep recycling. I would pay a, a, a higher fee, but I understand that the economics of it may not make that feasible. Also don't think that it's, if only, if 60% of people are getting charged and they're not recycling, doesn't seem fair. It does seem, I don't know, I don't, but at this point, it's a hard decision that we're going to have to make. The earth's not getting any younger. So, I would rather us scrap the entire program and come back and make an educated decision later than have a one-week deadline to figure out what we're going to do.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Hello, my name is Patrick Stare. I live here downtown. Before I retired from the Department of Environmental Quality, one of the things I did in my spare time was I managed the internal recycling program there. And one of the things I found after 10 years of doing it, dealing with Waste Management, writing the RFP to get them, dealing with Carol, with Plaskey County Solid Waste Management District, dealing with the people who were doing the recycling inside, is education is absolutely critical. And one of the big problems I had, not only with our current recycling program, but with the bins that we had before, was a nearly complete lack of education, no outreach. People that move in don't get information indicating what's recyclable, when you pick, put it out. I've not seen any flyers come after this initial rollout of these bins, which were really nice, and I never got anything else from Waste Management or the city of North Little Rock or Plaskey County indicating, this is how you recycle. This is what's good, this is what's bad. We absolutely need it. There should be something that goes out when people move in. We know it because we set up North Electric Bills. We need quarterly or semi-annual mailouts to everybody, reminding them of it. We also need a real good outreach program to go into the neighborhood organizations, the church groups, the civic groups, and explain to them about recycling in North Little Rock. I love recyc, I love recycling. I would do a drop-off, I would do a subscription, I'll pre-sort, I'll use single stream, whatever it takes to recycle, I'll do it. And I'd be really disappointed and sad if a city the size of North Little Rock didn't have a recycling program. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Good evening, Councilmember. Wade McNew here. We live in Park Hill in Ward Four. I am not for getting rid of recycling. I think we've come too far with what we have. It's not perfect, but I think we can work with it. One of the things that, I've been a facility manager for about 25 years, and every recycling company that I've dealt with on a commercial basis have wanted to change their contract in the middle, every one. BMI, Waste Management, Republic, they all did, for one reason or another. So that's when they, when the mayor said about wanting, we were going to have to go up in our rates in October, when our contract don't even stop until April, that kind of perked my ears up. I think that's dirty pool. One of the things that I would like to ask is, is a bin non-recyclable if they find one Kroger sack in there? Does anybody know? Is that mean it's...
No, I don't want to get into question and answer during public comment.
Okay, well, let me just, let me just...
I'll, I'll answer that question real quick. Yes, it could be considered contaminated with one, one plastic bag in there.
Okay, very good. So, if Waste Management had bought the right equipment to handle these bags, like I do know they make, that might be took care of. One thing, I will agree with the education, and I've written Waste Management, why don't they have an open house at the facility for, on a Saturday, to invite the public to see, this is what happens when you put a dirty pizza box in the, in the, in the bucket? This is why we can't use it? Maybe that would help with the education. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Mayor, my name is David Steinmetz. I live in the Indian Hills neighborhood. First, let me say I do support the recycling program that we currently have. I think it needs, has room for improvement, like everyone else. But I guess my issue is at home, if somebody came to me and said, you got a service and I'm going to double your rate tomorrow, or next month, or whatever, I'd check my options. I, I can't just keep a checkbook open and doubling, doubling the price. So, I would ask that we at least take a look and see if there are other options out there. I know they have a nice Murph, all that it does out there. What other options are there available? You know, I, I don't know today what's out there, but I would ask that we take a look at that. Or, like I said, with the city, another issue is, is the contamination. I think the only way that we're going to clean it up is to have somebody look in it. It may be to go back to the cart, or the, the bins, the gallon, 18-gallon bins we used to have, but something where they're looking at it instead of after it's dumped in there. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Bobby Taylor. Mayor, I don't know where you was at the night that this recycle was passed. I was sitting right over there when the guy from Recycle, and Mayor Hayes was here, and they talked about it. This room, best I remember, was full, and said the only way that he would take it would be mandatory that everybody took it. So, after it was over with, there was quite a bit of discussion. It kind of went downhill from there. And I recycle, there's several people in my neighborhood that does, there's lots of them that don't. But the biggest problem that I have, they got nobody there that can answer a question, and they won't call you back. That's happened, ain't no telling how long. So I quit calling them and started working with Harold Ford and having some of these recycle bins picked up. It's left out there, day after day, week after week, month after month, and when the spring, when the, when the wind's blowing, they liable to go a block. And I've seen them with lawn mowers, bicycles, anything you can name. I've seen them with niches, blinds, mop panels, there for a month at a time and not even picked up. And I've called Waste Management, and they said, well, they don't pick up anything that's not recyclable. So, it's just like blowing grass off of your lawn out in the street. We're going to pay for this one of these days if we don't do something with it. But it's kind of hard to make somebody do something they don't want to do. And the people that rent, sometimes they'll put stuff out of the icebox in them, and it'll stay out there till it stinks before I can get it disposed of. So, I'm for recycle, but I hope y'all can come up with something that both sides will be satisfied, and we can do something that, that will work for both sides.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else want to speak? Any council members? Okay.
Are you going to, you're going to present legislation in two weeks?
Right.
And it's going to be something off of this page, right?
It, I'm not sure exactly how our city attorney's going to word that legislation, but it will, it, basically, we will vote in two weeks on if we're going to continue the contract, pay the $124,000, and raise the price to $4.14, or we're not. Okay? And if anybody's got any questions or comments, you know, feel free to call me. I'm talking about this bunch, and as far as the city goes, the citizens out there, we're monitoring our Facebook page and our website, so, you know, we want your input, we want your ideas. If you've got a great idea that we hadn't thought about, we want to hear it. You know, if there's other cities doing something, there's a reason to reinvent the wheel, so we want, we want to hear from you.
Mayor, are you, have you done, are you complete with your negotiations with Waste Management? Have y'all...
Well, never say never. So, no, I mean, the, the conversation is still ongoing.
Okay. So, I mean, I mean, we hadn't totally pointed our finger at them. I'm sure that, so I'm, I'm just wondering if, if Waste Management has, has offered any ideas to how we can increase the participation rate and how we can decrease the contamination? Nothing?
No, and it's, Craig, can you address that, that, on the contamination rate and what, what they're striking out of their contract?
I'm Craig Douglas. I'm Executive Director of the Recycling District here in Plaskey County. As far as the negotiations and where they stand today with the latest offer from Waste Management, they would discontinue tagging altogether. And they would, they would also participate in a limited auditing program by route to determine contamination rates. That has nothing to do with the participation aspect of it. The strategy that the district has employed since January is to address those households who do participate and want to recycle, and make sure that they have the education and information tools to do it right. We have not focused on households that don't participate. That's another issue for down the road. The district will spend over a quarter of a million dollars this year in education. As several people have mentioned, in the most recent research we have done, the number one thing that people who want to recycle want is more information. So that's really the challenge, to deal with folks who want to recycle and make sure they're doing it right, to reduce the contamination rate, and make the ultimate product that Waste Management or any other company has more marketable, which makes recycling work. But it starts with the residential customer. If the residential customer who wants to participate in recycling doesn't know how to do it right, none of this works.
That's a question I have. The customers that do not recycle, they still have a bin, don't they?
Well, most of them do, yeah.
They use it for trash.
We've picked up by three, 400, Harold, what'd you say? Or more?
And it's ongoing, and it, and that also starts with those people that, that are, that are using their recycle bin and contaminating. And after we've worn them a time or two, do we retrieve their bin?
Yeah. And Waste Management was, was supposed to do that, and it was in the contract that the ones that we pick up, we, we bill them $50. Isn't that right, Harold?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Taylor?
I guess I'm just, either my brain is just too simple, or I, I'm not getting it, but I don't understand this education thing. There's the internet that's out there where you can go to their website and look to see what is recyclable, what is not, how to participate in the program. There's, as Mr. Stare said, there's, there's ways to get information out via the water bill, electric bill, our website, there's a million ways to get information out there, so I don't understand this education thing. When you guys brought the bins out, there was a label at the top that says what could be recycled, what can't be. Maybe that's outdated. be recycled, what can't be, maybe that's outdated or whatever, but I don't understand the contamination, I don't understand the, the, the education thing, I mean, because there's, there's, there's ways to get the information, so why, why the information not being gotten is just beyond me.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing. Ms. White?
I will say that the sticker on top of those bins, mine is long gone, I went out today to look at it, and I mean, they were, it's been gone for a long time, I can't, I can't read it.
But, but initially, with the stickers that they put out, they also put out a flyer.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it, and guess what that flyer is? That's what that flyer is at my house.
On your fridge?
On the refrigerator.
Okay. My other question was, from earlier, so the legislation at the next council meeting will be to determine whether we will continue the contract or not? Okay, and then, is it going, I think, was Mr. Rhodes asked the question, you know, are we going to have some time to see what it is we are going to do following that? Will, the program would end and then we will have, what will we have?
Well, I mean, we're, we're going to be full steam ahead, starting, well, right now. I mean, I'm calling the Lionel Jordan up in Fayetteville to set a meeting up on the twenty-sixth, to go up there and see how they run their program. Craig's is going to help us, Robert Birch and Nathan on our staff are dedicated to bringing us all options that are out there, and then I'm hoping that the, the Wayne Rathmans and the David Steinmetz of the world are going to come and, and give us some great ideas and then, and then Courtney Little, Courtney Little with Ace Glass, they're starting a glass program that we're going to look into and see about, so we're, we're full steam ahead to bring you guys options back so that we'll, we'll have something to fulfill that recycling need come April first.
But, back to the question, but there'll be a gap in time from when we vote this case or no?
Oh, yeah.
What will happen in that interim time?
Well, our contract with them doesn't expire until March the thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
I don't know, and we, this may have been discussed or if I just missed it, as far, because they, in, are they still going to charge us a flat fee for contaminated loads that Waste Management would have to, tipping fee on that?
No. I mean, they might try to charge us, but I've, I've told everybody on our staff that writes checks that we're not paying any of it.
Okay, so in the contract, we don't...
Contract does not, not allow for them to, to charge us back for contaminated goods that go to the landfill.
And just one more thing on the education, that, that Councilmember Taylor, as far as education, the ones that are doing the most contaminating, they don't care. There's not enough education in the world that you could do. If you don't care, you can't educate them.
But they don't want to be educated.
They don't want to be educated.
They don't want to.
That's exactly what it is, so those are the ones that, as Mr. Ford has said, we've just taken those bins. If you don't want to do it right, then you just take your bins.
Well, there's another ten, there's another ten thousand out there we should take.
Right, exactly, yes.
All right, I'm going to, one more, Mr. Witcher?
One question, okay. Mayor, since our contract runs through March of next year, what if we take a hard line and say, hey, we're not going to pay the extra, we've got a contract with you, we expect you to abide by it, and that's, and that is our, the entity's stance?
Well, that's what we're going to do. I mean, it, the contract says that they will pick up our recycling until March the thirty-first for two dollars and ninety-nine cents a household, and so it's going to be my opinion that I'm not going to pay the hundred and twenty-four thousand, even if it's other people's money, and I'm not going to go to, I don't want to go to the four dollars and fourteen cents starting in April. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn this workshop and we'll re-adjourn in five minutes with the tonight's council meeting.